And we will call the regular meeting of council for Monday, January the 8th to order, 7:00 PM. We are acknowledging that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Salish people, so welcome to our council chambers. Before we move to approval of the agenda, have been advised by staff that there are three items because of some last-minute information that's come up that need to be removed from our agendas. So council, if you would look to items 7.2.1 in regards to the Ocean Boulevard road closure and highway dedication bylaw removal, and its related item under bylaws, 8.2, both of them to come off for this evening for that further information to be brought forward. And staff will speak to that when we get there. And also, item 8.1 for final reading in regards to a resolution crossover that happened at our December 18th meeting. So these things were supposed to come through at the same time and not independently. So with that, I will ask Brent to just acknowledge those items, please.
Thank you, your worship. Would you like to begin with the Ocean Boulevard?
Sure, 7.2.1.
Thank you. We'd just like to ensure that all the conditions of the bylaw and the report are consistent with each other, and we noticed a couple of changes in it that aren't germane to the actual bylaw but are necessary to come forward. And for those reasons, we've pulled them back because of the late change with that information that came to us just at the end of last week, which wasn't in time to capture the output to council.
Thank you. And that would then be the reason for 8.2. If we don't have it to start with, we can't read first, second, and third. Other, item 8.1.
Item 8.1, which is the Seafield Road closure, that was posted for notice correctly. However, staff jumped the gun. Quite frankly, we brought forward a combined reading of the rezoning as well as the adoption of that bylaw, and that reading wasn't able to be prepared for tonight. So we're asking that the Seafield Road closure be deferred. That said, we have received a significant amount of input from the residents and the community at large in regards to the Seafield closure. I've read through those inputs. We've received over 10 written notices and over 72 people on the petition that have spoken to the timing objectives in large order. Several people have spoken in opposition of the closure intent. A large volume of people have spoken about the traffic consideration for it, and a significant portion have spoken to the timing factors indicating that they would request, it's not a direct opposition to the bylaws going forward, but they would request the timing that the new road be in use and functional for traffic before the old road gets closed.
And I'm sure all of council would be hopeful that the road would be open before closing. The 8.2 was first, second, and third readings for the park and ride.
My apologies. Mixed up then. So 8.2 being the park and ride, which is the Ocean Road consideration, that was the late input from review with our solicitors, ensuring that's buttoned up forward and all that information came late to council as of today, which was deemed to be not enough of time for you to review those changes. So that'll just come back at the next meeting. That's for first, second, and third reading. It was the Seafield one that I addressed with the amount of input from the public.
Absolutely. So with that, council, removing those three items from our agenda this evening, looking for approval of the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda submitted, your worship.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Public participation, this is a time for you folks in the audience to come and speak up. So the podium is ready. I can see little red lights on, so we're good to go. Ms. Johnson.
Welcome back and happy new year to you all. I'm here with my list of new year topics for your discussions. I will stay tuned to your council videos, committee agendas, and email notices as the year unfolds to hear your answers. As you all know, 2018 is another election year. On that theme, I would like to ask this council to do whatever is required to come up with a question to go on the ballot in October, asking the electorate if they would support a merger of municipalities in this area. I also want to thank you for listening to the residents who voiced concerns during the OCP process about the importance and preservation of trees and other natural spaces in Callwood. I think the new tree bylaw was a great place to start. The new bylaw looks very comprehensive, but I question how it will be effectively enforced, especially around developments. By the time a person sees a tree coming down, it is too late to call City Hall. Moving heavy equipment around under a tree will damage and kill a tree, so a developer can then remove it without penalty. Do you want neighborhood involvement, or will bylaws or the planning department people check that there is sufficient protection provided for a tree below and around the perimeter of the drip line? Why was the entire stretch of Machosen from Terahue past Sangster School to the Hatley Drive area designated as playground and a speed of 30 kilometers per hour was implemented? There are no playgrounds in that area except for the rear Sangster Field and Dunsmere Fields. I do understand that speeding is a valid concern, but it is not just specific to this area. It made more sense to leave it as a school zone, so it is back to 50 kilometers an hour on the weekends, evenings, and during the summer when school is not in session. The traffic light required at Lagoon and Machosen will also help to lower the speeds. I would also like to let you know that the speed bumps between Seafield and Portsmouth are gentle yet effective along Heatherbell. Thank you. But I do have a serious issue with the way the disposal of Seafield Road has been handled. Tonight was scheduled to be the third and final reading for this without community consultation or notification. I'm sure the city followed all the rules, but a two-by-four ad in the Goldstream Gazette on December 22nd, followed by the closure of city offices the following week stunned Ocean Grove residents and the rest of us, leaving us unable to find out more about this closure. This was not posted on the city public notices online site, nor was there an email sent or a sign put along the road by the city. Seafield as it exists is necessary as a pressure valve, so to speak, between the old and new developments and those yet to come. We do not want a narrow street as found in West Hills. Don't forget that there is another large chunk of land at the end of Seafield that is still in the ALR, which requires large vehicular deliveries of supplies from time to time. Realize also that walking and cycling in our area is challenging due to the large hills on Heatherbell and Lagoon roads, and there is currently no bus service into this area. This development could have its own laneway access via a cul-de-sac from Heatherbell. Our old Seafield Road could be brought up to city standards and be wider, which would be more consistent with the existing neighborhood. We understand that a new, very narrow Seafield will be completed for us to use, but keep our options open with old Seafield at least until the Ocean Grove residents have another access road into their development. We don't know how long it will take to develop the site or if it ever will be completed. I would also like to mention that perhaps a little due diligence might be necessary. There was a comment made that it is possible that the portion of Seafield Road from Heatherbell to Sellic might not even be registered as a legal road, so trading it would not be an option. To finish up, I think this land swap and potential new development deserves serious second thought and should be put on hold. This is not good for my neighborhood, Ocean Grove, or the Callwood taxpayers. What does Callwood get out of this? From where I stand, it only serves to line the pockets of this developer by allowing him to put more houses on the property. Thank you.
My name is Terry Phipps, and I'm a resident of Ocean Grove. I'll keep this short. My comments concern the new Seafield Road if the proposed road exchange is approved. For the 88 residential units of Ocean Grove, the proposed new road will be the main access road. My concern is that the new road is not sufficiently wide enough to allow for both street parking and for two cars to pass each other safely. As indicated in the updated master plan dated March 18th, the proposed road width is six meters. The existing Seafield Road is six meters and does not allow for both street parking and the safe passing of two vehicles.
I've been here before. I think you all have a letter that I submitted. Hopefully you read it. I just wanted to be clear, I'm not sure whether I misunderstood Mr. Molner or he misunderstood us. From what he was saying, I got the impression that he felt the concerns were relating to the timing of the construction of the new Seafield versus closing of the old Seafield. The concern is the use of Seafield as it's proposed to be relocated before there's a second access into Ocean Grove. I'm sure most of you are aware that the previous developer had proposed building a main access into Ocean Grove off of Heatherbell, would basically parallel Seafield, and at such time, I think virtually all of us could support the subdivision that's proposed there now. The concerns that I've heard primarily and that I share are that it's premature to relocate Seafield Road until there's a better permanent access into Ocean Grove. It's not to do with the timing of when the new Seafield gets built and the old Seafield gets closed. It's frankly that the passage of all the Ocean Grove residents through the new subdivision or even worse perhaps, different anyway, through the old subdivision, and then making an awkward turn to get into the existing Sellic Way is, in my opinion, premature. Wait till there's a second access and then let the guy go ahead, in my opinion.
Happy new year to all. My name is Deborah Wakem, and I'm a resident at 3187 Matilda Drive. And I'm choosing to speak tonight regarding the permanent closure of a portion of Seafield Road, bylaw 1687, where the bylaw intends to permanently close a section of Seafield Road from Heatherbell to Sellic Way. As a resident of Matilda Drive, I respectfully ask that council not approve the closure of Seafield Road from Heatherbell to Sellic. As a resident, our family does not want additional vehicular traffic from the existing Ocean Grove development nor from its future growth, traveling through our neighborhood to enter and exit the area. If council does close the proposed portion of Seafield Road, all traffic from Ocean Grove must travel along Matilda onto Portsmouth Drive and eventually connect to Heatherbell. This would, in essence, double the amount of traffic coming down our road and in our neighborhood. We really appreciate the low-traffic, slow-traffic area. It's one that we can take daily walks without having to jump out of the way of vehicles. And by the way, we don't have sidewalks in our neighborhood. If this section of Seafield Road is closed, then replaced with a new road within the new proposed residential development, I ask that you not close Seafield Road from Heatherbell to Sellic Way until such time as the new roadway is fully complete and until traffic from Ocean Grove is able to travel upon it. Furthermore, if the city allows for the closure based on the idea that the closed portion will be replaced by a new portion, I'd like to ask that the city ensure that the new portion of Seafield Road is able to accommodate not only those new residents of the residential development that's being considered within that subdivision, but also construction traffic and all the traffic from Ocean Grove so that nothing spills into our neighborhood. Please also take into consideration that Seafield Road currently accommodates traffic from land in our community that is designated agricultural. This is where livestock and farm feed and material is transported on Seafield Road. If you haven't been down in our area, there's sheeps, there's been cows, there's hay that's delivered. All of this is brought into the community through Seafield Road, so if Seafield Road is replaced, the replacement road needs to be able to accommodate that. Don't close the existing Seafield Road until the new road is open and fully usable by the community. Our hope is that we don't have to sit through several years of construction and have Ocean Grove traffic travel through our neighborhood because council gave the road access up to a developer. I'd also like to ask the city of Callwood take appropriate measures and bonding to ensure proper and full completion of the new portion of Seafield Road, if it does occur. Please don't let the development sit incomplete or partially completed. I'd also like to ask that you follow up with the new owners of Ocean Grove to revisit and reconfirm roadways that were previously proposed out on Goldfinch and Heatherbell. And finally, in the future, I'd ask that you work to improve communication with residents in our area. If it were not for us being alerted by a neighbor on January the 4th, we would have been completely unaware of this roadway change or this proposed roadway change. It just doesn't seem right. A couple of years ago, you had notices delivered to our door to tell us that there was a movie being filmed at Royal Roads and that a noise bylaw was going to be interrupted. Yet you're considering closing a road and you don't properly notify the residents in the area. It does seem strange. And timing over the holiday season is just not reasonable for the community to become engaged and to have communication. To me, this roadway appears to be a tremendous gift to the developer. I ask Callwood Council to take great care and consideration to ensure that the existing community and those who reside in the community in the future benefit from the development. Look carefully and consider what the community receives in return and what bonds and assurances are being taken to ensure development and build-out commitments are fulfilled. Thank you very much.
I'm Doug McDougall, 288 Portsmouth Drive. I only too just found out about the road and the development unofficially. I didn't know about anything about this until the other day. But I'll be quick. The thing about the new road on Seafield, if this is a given, that Blackberry Field's going to be turned into a development, all well and good. Put the new road in first, though. Don't take the old road out, because where I live on Portsmouth Drive, I will get in front of my house, which is busy enough now, all the people from the apartments, Matilda, et cetera, et cetera, and South Portsmouth. There's already street parking on Portsmouth Drive, all up and down, for people that are living in suites. So adding congestion of those civilian vehicles is not good, but then again, you're going to have construction vehicles, or we're going to have construction vehicles, dump trucks, whatever, not to mention the cars that the workers are going to be driving to get to and from work. All of this adds to the congestion, and I don't know that that's been taken into account enough or thought through enough. If I had known earlier, I would have written you something to join the pile over there, but I think it's important that you pay attention to what we have to say and look at it very, very carefully before you decide. Thank you.
I'm Heather Lang, and I live at 402-3223 Sellic Way, of course, down at Ocean Grove. But mine's going to be a little bit different than everything that you've heard right now. So I've lived at Ocean Grove for the past three years, and before that, I owned a home on Portsmouth, in fact, backing on to the Seafield development. So I am well aware of all the problems in the neighborhood that have been going on for many, many years. For full disclosure, I am on the Strata Council for Baltic II, which is one of the two independent Strata councils making up the Ocean Grove development. I am here speaking as a resident and not on behalf of the council. Having said that, I am pleased to have the opportunity to advocate for the closing of Seafield Road. In particular, addressing the concern that Ms. Day mentioned at the December 18th city council meeting, on that day she expressed discomfort voting for the Seafield Road closure, stating that she couldn't recall hearing anyone saying anything positive about this development. Well, I am here, and I have three points to make. One, I am advocating not only for this development to get started by closing Seafield and have people drive the temporary one minute around the block, but for the whole Lagoon area to be finished so that we have a neighborhood, a community, with roads and lights and trees and parks. People walking their dogs safely, hopefully a neighborhood coffee house. With our beach location and proximity to Royal Roads' walking trails, our area should be the number-one desirable area in Callwood with people fighting to get in. Well, that is far from the present situation. And number two, you mentioned you had not heard that many people say favorable things about this development. At your December 18th council meetings, Mr. Parkinson, Stuart Parkinson, although he is president of the other Strata Council of Ocean Grove, spoke as a resident of Ocean Grove, saying he was for the development, calling it a nifty little development. Stuart wished a few other things were different and took the opportunity to voice his personal opinion, but he stated he was for the development. But Stuart and I are only two people. There are others. Number three, every person, without exception, which is a full 100% of the people who bought either one of the original 100 units or a resale at Ocean Grove, over the past 10 years, was fully aware that the area was being developed. They saw the development plans. If those people were not agreeable to buying a house in an area scheduled for development, they would have bought elsewhere, but they didn't. So I don't know how much proof you need, how much more proof you need, that people want this area developed. They put hard-earned cash down for a vision of a neighborhood, a community. So where are all these people and why are they not showing up at a council giving positive reviews? They're at home, saying, when is this going to start and who is holding up the process? In summation, although I now live at Ocean Grove, as I said, my previous home was on Portsmouth, backing on to the Seafield property. At the time of our house purchase, City Hall said that we could probably enjoy about five years of blackberry picking before development would start. Although my husband and I didn't like the idea of listening to the eventual construction noise, we looked forward to having a neighborhood, a community, built in an amazing location so close to the beach. My daughter was one year old when we bought. She just turned 29. It's time to stop trying to please the small minority who have been successfully delaying development and do what was promised. Give us our neighborhood by finishing this community, and it starts with closing Seafield. Thank you.
Anyone else out of the public at this time?
Good evening. Rick Marshand, 3508 Aloha Avenue. I have a totally different issue I'd like to raise with council this evening. As some of you may know, I've had the opportunity to voice concerns with respect to accessibility in both the OCP discussions and communities of the whole, et cetera. I've worked fairly closely over the past year with the Rick Hansen Foundation, mentoring some of the people that are there in terms of getting their businesses off the ground. There's a whole core of consultants and trained professionals that's part of that group. And what I want to do this evening is make you aware of what's actually happening with the Rick Hansen Foundation and the opportunities that may exist for this council to leverage off of what they're doing. I think it's important to understand this. The Rick Hansen Foundation is taking a Canada-wide effort to ensure that the application of standards and the measurement of accessibility is uniformly applied across the country, not just on a province-by-province or community-by-community basis. To that end, they're training a core of evaluators with a standard approach in order to determine what accessibility means to a community and to the people that are disadvantaged. And this is more than just people that are in wheelchairs, hearing impaired, visually impaired, people who are challenged in other ways. In addition to that, they're also formally certifying the approaches that they're taking with both the CSA as well as with local governments to ensure that this approach is something that can be embodied from a community, from a province, and from a national perspective. Okay, having said that, I've been made aware that the Rick Hansen Foundation in British Columbia, both in Victoria and Vancouver, have at their disposal the opportunity for 1,100 complimentary registration and certification efforts to be taken place free of charge to the communities and the local governments. That application for a free evaluation runs out in March of 2019. At that point, the value of the associated evaluation and reporting mechanism will ramp up to $5,500 per effort. I think it's important as a taxpayer and as a council, knowing how stressed that some of our staff members are in the Callwood city staff, to undertake these kind of efforts themselves, that we try and leverage off of what's going on, both provincially and nationally, in this effort. Once a community has decided to go down this path, and by the way, City of Victoria is all over this, the University of Victoria is all over this, Victoria International Airport is jumping on board, they're taking advantage of this as I speak. But once an effort has been undertaken, and there's no obligation on the city council to implement anything, but you will have a document that will have observations about the good and the bad of any building and/or structure that you would like to have these people evaluate. Once that's been done and rated, the organization then may qualify for up to a $20,000 B.C. government grant to rectify the situation. I think this is something that can't be ignored from both a taxpayer perspective as well as from a council perspective. To that end, I have a whole host of documentation here that I'll leave with the secretary so that you can look at it at your own convenience. I'm not representing the Rick Hansen Foundation, but I would also recommend that we might want to send out a letter to the local point of contact that I can provide to you and have them come and maybe brief council at a future meeting, because I think it's important that we, as a community, embrace this. And with that, I'll close my comments.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Oh, you've been trying to get up.
John Sorensen. I represent Seafield Properties, the project that you're referring to now. I'm sorry that this issue has come up at this point, but it's absolutely unequivocal that Seafield Road, as it is, remains open till we have a fully operational road. So...
Sean, can I, sorry, just, it's a matter of you addressing council, and I'm sure our very willing-eared participants in the audience are listening, listening. And I know it's hard, folks, so he's probably gonna...
I don't even know if it's appropriate for me to speak. I am...
As a member of the public, you can...
As a member of the public, but I am representing the developer here. And again, it's unequivocal, both in every way, that that road remains open, fully operational, till a new road is in place, and that the new road meets all the standards of the municipality and is fully workable before anything occurs. And I can, it's not appropriate right now for me to extol the virtues of what we're doing there, but I think with, there'll be greater safety with the new road, there'll be a sidewalk, there's a park. I think, to paraphrase someone else before or quote them, it's a nifty little development. And again, I can assure people, and I would, I'd like to also, and I'm willing, because I had done this previously when we had gone to third on the proposal previously, is to make myself available to everyone, to walk it through with drawings and details so that they know fully what's occurring. I think in fairness to what is occurring this evening, there has been possibly, it just sort of came out of nowhere, but it's been there all along, and I just want to... And I just want to assure people that the process is, has integrity and, and we can't contravene it in any way. So the road's there for all the residents of Ocean Grove and when the time comes, there's a new road and it'll be safer, better, and walkable. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any last comments from anybody in the public? Stuart, sure. We'll, we'll afford you a, a second trip.
Well, you know, I am perfectly capable of, of, of speaking for myself. I had a couple of people come up and reference my comments. I would suspect historically that's probably not going to do them any good, but, yes, I do think it's a nifty little subdivision. I think it's premature until there's a second entrance into Ocean Grove, so I don't mind people, I will stand up and support it as being a nifty little subdivision, but not now. So if people want to quote me, I'd rather they quoted the whole me instead of half of me. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will move on with our meeting and this kind of merges into Mayor's message. So I'll just follow up folks with what you heard this evening and, and that is that the road closure notification in the paper is a matter of process. It's a stepped process that we have to undertake. Many of you know Sandra Russell, who's our communications officer. She had, it was maybe bad timing, she succumbed with that flu and sickness and whatever, so she was not able to get all of the updated information perhaps that you're used to seeing in our communications up on our website. But at any time, there's always that pick-up and phone call to, to members of the council and to staff to ensure that your questions get answered because we could have let you know early on how and, and the way that this was going and, and address that. But we're appreciative of the time you've taken to bring that into staff and it will be recorded and Doug, I think, left the room already, but if he has words to write, he can write them and we'll accept them anyways in, in, in the review. So thanks so much, everybody, for coming out and we're going to move towards our rest of our council meeting. I don't have a whole lot more to add on Mayor's message this evening. It is welcome back, it's the new year and congratulations to everyone who made it through a successful holiday season without getting that flu and cold. I'm amazed to see how many are showing up here because it's been bad everywhere out there, so, but Counselor Day, you do have an AGM to let us know about?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everyone know that the, I chair the Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee and we'll be having our annual general meeting on Wednesday, January 17th at 11:30 at the council chambers at Victoria City Hall. And it is an open meeting, anyone who'd like to is welcome to attend. We are going to have a guest speaker at our regular meeting, which kind of follows immediately after the annual general meeting where there's the election of officers for the coming year. And then we have a regular meeting and we will be having a guest speaker from Royal Bay High School, Carly Bryson, who works for West Shore Parks and Rec, will be presenting. She is the youth program coordinator who works at Royal Bay High School and she has been working with Youth For Change and a number of youth groups working to ensure that youth have community connections, which are very protective for their wellbeing. And she will be presenting on behalf of the youth because they are busy with their classes at this time of year, but she will be presenting initiatives that they're interested in, including possibly partnering with the Community Garden Initiative here at Callwood City Hall. So just thought it had a local connection and would be of interest to the community.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Counselor Nalt?
I'd just like to remind council and the audience that the inaugural meeting of the task force on our urban forest bylaw will be taking place on Thursday, starting at 7:00 PM. I think the council has appointed a really good committee. We have arborists, we have registered professional foresters, we have residents. I'm really looking forward to their input and I'm looking forward to any public or developer input on this bylaw as well. Thank you.
I thought you were going to say the council appointed a, a really good council member. Counselor Nalt? Moving forward then, we have adoption of one set of minutes of December the 18th. All those in favor? Pose, motion carried. A receipt of one set of minutes for advisory planning on November 8th. All those in favor? Pose, motion carried. And I should note that Counselor Rob Martin is unavailable this evening. He could be in later. He had a presentation that he was making to Oak Bay Council this evening for the library board. Presentations we have with us, and sorry for the bit of delay, but we have presentations from the Ambulance, Paramedics, and Emergency Dispatch Service of BC, Cameron Eby here? And I'm not sure who else you brought with you, Paxton? Perfect.
Good evening, Cameron Eby, President of the Ambulance, Paramedics of BC, my colleague Paxton Grill, Regional Vice President in, in your area, as well as a paramedic in, in Greater Victoria. I'm a paramedic and unit chief in Courtney, north on the island. So the Ambulance, Paramedics of BC represents 4,500 paramedics and dispatchers in British Columbia and we serve as not only the labor union for the, for paramedics and dispatchers, but also as the professional voice. And through the, our role as the professional voice, we are, we are always advocating for service improvements in various communities around the province. That ultimately translates into better patient care for your citizens. Paramedics deliver a high-quality healthcare. What's, the phrase we like to use is they, that we bring the emergency department to your living room, or in some cases, we bring the intensive care unit to your living room. So we're here tonight to speak to you about the delivery of those services in, in the Callwood area. Recently at UBCM in, in the fall of 2017, we, we spoke to a number of communities, we had a booth and we spoke to a number of municipalities from around the province. And there's a growing concern that there's a lack of services, a lack of paramedic services, ambulances in their community, and that's translating into more of a role for the municipal first responders provided by the fire department. And so that's something we want to touch on. I'll just quickly review the Callwood paramedic staffing that you have, which is that you have one 24-hour-a-day primary care paramedic ambulance that's, that's stationed out of Langford and services the entire West Shore area. So that one ambulance does any type of call, goes to anything and everything and covers this large area around you. Then there's a second advanced care paramedic ambulance that is also staged in Langford, but changes shift in Victoria. So twice a day, they have to go back to Victoria, change crew, and come back to this area. They cover not only this area, but an extended area out into Suk and Millbay, so it's a, it's quite a large area. And when I say advanced care paramedic and primary care paramedic, the, the, the easy distinction between the two is the advanced care paramedic are targeted at the higher acuity calls, cardiac, respiratory, trauma, that sort of thing. So they don't go to every call, whereas the primary care paramedic is, is sort of the general duty assigned to everything. Of course, Callwood is often covered by other ambulances brought in from neighboring communities. That's one of the great strengths of our, our provincial ambulance services that we don't have, municipal boundaries don't matter too much to us. That's, that can be a very good thing and that can be a very bad thing, depending on if you're the municipality getting one or losing one on a day-to-day basis. So the types of calls in, in Callwood, in speaking to some of the paramedics that work in the area, is pretty typical for the demographic in the area. Again, those heart attacks, shortness of breath, general weakness, collapse, that sort of thing. So it's a pretty stereotypical community in that regard. However, with, like most other communities in the province, there's an increased demand, not only due to a growing population, but an aging population. There's a different demand on their healthcare service due to the aging population. And of course, no community is immune to the opioid crisis, which is putting a further strain on everything. Our understanding of the Fire First Responder Program in, in Callwood is that you have a mixture of paid and volunteer firefighters who provide first response to some, but not all, medical pre-hospital events. Primarily, they're responding to motor vehicle accidents, anything requiring a technical rescue, high-acuity calls, so when somebody, a cardiac arrest or choking, something that needs very urgent thing. And that's the level of service that, that we wholeheartedly agree with. We think you're right on target with that. So as I said before, the issue that we're hearing from a lot of municipalities is that with the change in their population and age and, and in size, certainly in size, is there hasn't been a corresponding increase in, in ambulance staffing or number of paramedics available. Many municipalities you're hearing from their citizens that it's taking too long for paramedics to arrive and so they're waiting 15, 20, 30 minutes for, for an ambulance, which, which we believe just isn't acceptable. The national benchmark for paramedic response for an urgent call is eight minutes and 59 seconds. In British Columbia, we're not meeting that target most of the time. And so we believe that, unfortunately, I can't tell you exactly how much you're meeting that target in Callwood because we don't have access to that data. BCHS would have, would be able to answer that question. So as a result of, sorry, there's a number of reasons that, that delay, that ambulances and paramedics might be delayed getting to you. As I said before, we're having a changing demographic which results in a higher call volumes. There's also an ongoing concern with hospital delays, so paramedics take somebody to a hospital and then they end up staying with that patient for an extended period of time and that ties, obviously ties up that ambulance and it can't respond to another event. And then there's a, there's a lot of unnecessary 911 calls. And so there's a bunch of different reasons and, and we think that there's a few different solutions to that, which I'll touch on in a second. As I said before, the municipalities, some municipalities are feeling the pressure to have their first responders do more. And in doing that, the municipalities are essentially taking on an additional cost and an additional liability. That is really the responsibility of the provincial government, not municipal government. And so some recent examples of that are in Vancouver and in Kelowna. And both of those communities, City of Vancouver, not metropolitan Vancouver, but City of Vancouver and the City of Kelowna, both recently raised municipal taxes in part to pay for increased staffing for their fire departments to specifically address the increased volume of what they call ambulance assist or, or medical first responder calls. So again, we see that as a downloading of costs to you, the municipality, from the provincial government. As you know, we've had a change in the provincial government. Prior to the change, the, the prior government realized that, that they, the BC ambulance or BCHS hasn't kept pace with the, the growth needed and they announced $91 million in new funding. That was earlier in 2017. And so the, BCHS is in the process of deciding where that money is going to go right now. Obviously, we're part of that conversation and, and we want to make sure that it's spent in the most appropriate places to make sure that it's going to have the biggest impact. So that's a little bit of why we're here today is to highlight the fact that, you know, there is funding available. The province is looking at adding more paramedics. In fact, the, the new government, Premier Horgan issued a direction to the Health Minister and in the mandate is specifically listed more paramedics. So there is a desire from government, there is some funding from government, but you need to be the voice for your community in advocating for that addition. So before I mention the solutions, what we see the solutions are, A, first and foremost, more resources. We need more ambulances with more paramedics to make sure that we're hitting that national benchmark of eight minutes and 59 seconds. There's also some other strategies that we think need to be implemented in urban and metropolitan areas. And all your, although you're a community of 17,000-ish, you're obviously part of a large community. So as far as the ambulance is concerned, you're a metropolitan area here. And so one of them that I want to speak to you quickly about is called community paramedicine. And what this is, is it's a profoundly successful model that's been utilized for some years in other areas of Canada, but it's new to British Columbia. And essentially, community paramedics are performing post calls. They're, they are doing preventative medicine. So they are targeting usually the elderly population with chronic diseases, respiratory issues, cardiac issues, and they're targeting those people to go and visit them and make sure their healthcare needs are being met before a 911 call happens. So it's all about preventing that emergency from happening before it occurs. Other areas in, in Canada, it's being used and it's hugely successful. We've implemented it in about 70 communities in British Columbia at this point and it's been so far very successful. However, it's been specifically targeted at rural and remote in British Columbia. Other areas in BC, it has been used in large centers, for example Calgary, Winnipeg, Toronto, and Ottawa. And they're seeing a reduced, reduced number of 911 calls from the demographic that they're targeting. And essentially, they're allowing people to stay in their homes rather than going to the emergency department, which obviously is better for the healthcare system, it's better for the patients. So we think that there's a, that there is a, there's a strong case to expand the community paramedic program into municipalities like yours, larger communities. And finally, we think that there needs to be a more public awareness on when to call 911 for an ambulance and when not to call 911 for an ambulance. Other jurisdictions around the world have embarked on, on campaigns such as this and been quite successful in, in being able to mitigate some of that call volume and educating the public that, you know, there's some, some situations where you don't need an ambulance and that frees up those resources for the people that really do need it. So what we're asking you to do is speak to the provincial government for the, for your citizens about these issues and find out exactly how long it's taking for ambulances to arrive to patients in your community and be that voice and hopefully we can get some of the, those new resources for your area. Advise the government of your interest in the community paramedic program and what your community's needs are. The community paramedic program is, is specifically designed that what they put, what would be brought in here is different than what will be brought in, in Anima or in Courtney where I am. It's tailored specifically to your community and we're happy to provide you, you know, much more information on exactly what the program is so you can feel informed and i, if you're going to be having those conversations with government. And finally, we ask that you share this, this information and any concerns you have about ambulance services with your neighbor, the leaders in your neighboring communities because as I said, the municipal boundaries don't matter for, for our ambulance service, which is a good thing, but a united voice is a stronger voice. So your neighboring communities will be facing the exact same issues that you, you are. So we ask you to discuss those issues with them. And that's what we have for you tonight. Thank you.
I want to thank you both for taking time to come and, and share with you. I know Counselor Logan will attest to it, since 2005, we have definitely lost service, both in numbers of ambulances and, and response time. And clearly, it has that impact on our first responders for, through the fire department. As far as those silly 911 calls, I think police, fire, and ambulance have all had their fair share of when to and when not to, so it's a, a very broad campaign that should be activated. They just ran the top 10, I think, just recently and it was like, oh my goodness. But nonetheless, you know, I've personally had to use your services for family members and... and I have to say, it's been quick, and, you know, without any concerns for getting the job done. So appreciative of the work that's done out there in the field, so thank you. Any questions from counsel to the two folks that we have here right now? Counselor Day?
Thanks. I'm just curious about response times. So, you know, following on your lead of advocating with the province to get our share of the additional dollars that are being allocated provincially, I'd like to look at, in terms of, you know, different communities, how we stack up in terms of response times. And I know from our statistics with the fire department that, and maybe it's just a function of location or whatever, but, you know, our fire department's usually there first. It's just, you know, we're very fortunate, we have some wonderful, dedicated people who both volunteer and are paid to be there for our residents. But I'd like to look at what those response times are, and how we stack up, so that we could do a little statistical impact, and compare that to our fire department responses as well, so that we can sort of show that story that we kind of intuitively know is going on, that our call volumes are definitely rising, and that we could probably lighten that load with some additional provincial resources.
Absolutely. And as I said before, I can't provide you that answer, but we certainly encourage you to contact BCHS, who can. And you can make a request to them to provide you response data for the current year and the prior year, and so you can look at those trends. Anecdotally, speaking to some of the paramedics here, if the ambulance is available, the one that's assigned to Langford is available, you're looking at around ten-minute response time for your community. If it's not, then it's certainly it's longer. It's coming from various areas. Provincially, we know that the eight minutes fifty-nine seconds for the urgent calls, in rural and remote areas, is, it's more like thirty minutes. And in urban areas, it's more like twelve minutes is the average response time. But those numbers change, and so I would encourage you to contact BCHS and ask for the data for your own community, because certainly, that's what you want to know when you're speaking to the government.
Yeah, for sure. Because certainly, and it depends also on the time of day, because we certainly have, you know, traffic issues, not just in terms of collisions that the ambulances may be needing to attend, but also in terms of simply too many cars in the way between here and there at different times of day.
Certainly, and that kind of demographic is absolutely available. Time of day, day of the week, all those variables, so I encourage you to make that request.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a quick question. The community paramedic program has actually intrigued me. So, wondering if there's been any discussion with Island Health in terms of having them also advocate at their level to the province to bring in this program, realizing that, and perhaps demonstrating a, because governments love them, a cost benefit to instituting this program. And, you know, full disclosure, I work for Island Health, and so I'm acutely aware of some of the pressures in all the ERs on the island. In fact, I know that the two North Island hospitals are already over census.
Jammed.
Jammed. And I, my office happens to look after CDH, so I'm more in tune with their ER at the moment. But I just see this as a positive, if that benefit is proven, I suppose.
Absolutely. So, in other areas of the province, they're showing, they've been saying that a dollar spent on the community paramedicine program has returned two to three dollars of savings in the greater healthcare system, in keeping people out of the hospital. Obviously, somebody tying up an acute care bed is tremendously expensive, as opposed to having a paramedic go to their house and provide those services. Back to the first part of your question, the community paramedic program is being rolled out hand-in-hand with the health authorities. The whole principle of it is that it's an integrated health team. So paramedics, right now, we know paramedics as, there's an emergency, dial 911, the paramedics go and they take them to the hospital. This is, it's like a whole new arm of business for paramedics, essentially. And, like I said, doing house calls, what doctors used to do fifty years ago. And so, it's key that the health authorities are tied into that. And so, the first positions launched in the north, with Northern Health Authority, then it went to Interior Health, and then Island, and the final one was Coastal. Fraser has not adopted it yet. Coastal, or sorry, the Island Health, again, or the entire province has been focused on rural and remote communities. But that was a mandate that was handed down by the provincial government of the time, because it was part of the rural health strategies, initiative that they were launching. And so, we had a commitment from government for eighty FTEs, positions, and there was fifteen million dollars of funding, and that needs to be implemented by 2019. We're on schedule to implement all of those positions by March of 2018, so just three months away. And right now, we've got over a hundred community paramedics working part-time positions, regular part-time positions. So, the eighty FTEs is turning into more people, because they're slicing them up a little bit. So, but because the edict came down from government, that it was to be part of the rural health strategies, it has not been considered yet, as part of that initial sort of fifteen million dollar rollout, has not been considered for communities of this size. So, but I think that's the next stage, or we think that's the next stage. And something that's just been launched as of last week, postings are for advanced care paramedic, community paramedics. And so, those are being targeted at, the first ones are Campbell River, Salt Spring, Hidaway, Fort St. John, and one in the Kootenays, I forget. Yeah, Cranbrook. And in those communities, as I said before, the advanced care paramedics have additional education and training, and they can provide a higher level of patient care. And so, those communities have been targeted, that they're going to have those community paramedics to provide things like palliative care and pain control and all that kind of stuff in the patient's house, rather than moving into a hospice and that sort of thing. So, small community, big community, we need that. We need that everywhere.
Great.
Thank you.
Anyone else comment? Cameron and Paxton, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is correspondence requiring counsel direction. So we do have a letter from Mayor Doug Finletter from District of West Kelowna in regards to cannabis sales, and it's pending legality in 2018. He is requesting support by writing the provincial government to lobby to agree to fifty percent of the provincial share of the cannabis tax sharing formula be provided to local governments. This is an adequate and equitable share to help support costs and services incurred by local governments. And I did happen to pull just a bit of clarification on that, and the federal government, where this lies, has agreed to a sixty-forty split with the province. So, that, or pardon me, seventy, seventy-thirty. So, province will get seventy cents on the dollar of the tax, and the federal government will retain thirty cents. So what the letter's asking is that we get fifty percent of the seventy percent. Just to be clear on there, so it's not a fifty-fifty, it's a portion there. Welcome.
Thanks.
And so, I think it's, you know, if this is coming forward, there's many communities in discussion over what the costs will be to each of their communities through increased policing, or services provided, not, you know, no one's really sure what that will be at the end of the day. So, looking for counsel's direction as to what sort of response we want to make to West Kelowna. Counselor Day?
Thanks. It was a topic that came up at the FCM meeting that I'll be reporting out on later in the agenda. The Federation of Canadian Municipalities was pressuring the federal government to give more in regards to the cannabis tax revenue to the provinces, so that municipalities could gain a greater share, since FCM has certainly felt that municipalities would bear the brunt of the costs associated with any regulations. And certainly, that appears to be the case so far. We've been talking about how to regulate the sale of cannabis in BC. For, I think, the last three UBCMs, we've been talking about different approaches that different municipalities have taken. Tofino took one particular stance, Whistler took another. City of Vancouver and the City of Victoria both have slightly different approaches to how to regulate where cannabis is sold, and where those particular facilities are located, how many of them there will be. And that does take a considerable amount of staff time, which is money. So, I think that advocating for at least fifty percent, I would say, the only thing I would say is, I'm not sure, what does the provincial government need to spend money on exactly here? But fifty percent, I think, would be a good start, and then maybe advocate for something different once costs are more well-understood. I think it's a good idea to get out in front of this, so that we're advocating for at least an equal share, and no less than that. And perhaps advocate for more when we can make the case better, in terms of what our actual costs are.
Any other comments? Would you need recommendation, whether you want a letter written by counsel to put our name to the list of requesting fifty percent?
Well, I guess I would just ask counsel to consider whether we want to just write this letter right now, or do we want some input from our staff in terms of what we anticipate our costs would be before we send that letter? That's the only area I'm curious about.
We can certainly move it to committee of the whole.
I'd be happy to move it to committee of the whole for consideration, just so we have a chance to think about it a little bit more.
The difficulty is, Counselor Day has pointed out, is knowing what the costs are going to be, because only recently have they said it's going to take place through government liquor stores. So, we're not going to pay an awful lot more as a municipality for licensing of liquor stores. If it's successful, legalization is successful in the way they hope it is, it's going to take a whole bunch of money out of the pockets of organized crime. That will reduce policing costs by a fantastic amount. Nobody knows how much. In the jurisdictions in the United States, this has worked very well. However, being legal to spoken now, you're probably going to see an increase in the number of impaired drivers on pot. So, I think we should advocate for the fifty percent now, and once we know what the expenses are. I don't think staff is going to give any better prediction than I can myself. So I would say we should advocate for fifty percent now, and if it turns out we need more, then advocate for an increase.
So I'm going to take a half step back, because we did have a motion, although not seconded, to move it to committee of the whole, where we can have a better discussion, or I can ask for the secondar, and if none appears, we can move it on.
I'm happy to withdraw the motion. I just wanted to make sure we had a chance to consider whether or not we wanted our staff to have input on it.
With that, will, recommendation then, Counselor?
I would move the recommendation, that we write the letter supporting fifty percent share in the cannabis revenue that the province receives.
And a secondar on that? Counselor Day, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Next item before us is the letter from Telus Corporation, looking to receive or other I think this is just a...
Move or see.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? New Business Finance and Admin, seven point one point one memorandum, coming from Counselor Day, in regards to that FCM meeting update and report. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to bring back to all of counsel and the community, that as requested by counsel, I attended a roundtable with the FCM administration, and Chris Coleman, Victoria City Counselor, is our FCM representative, and was there, as well as members from throughout the region, and the Cowichan Valley region, and even a little further up island to the Anima region, talking about FCM's outreach, and they basically wanted to update us on their efforts, including calls to action on their three main topics, which is the National Housing Strategy, the non-medicinal cannabis, and the investing in the Canada Infrastructure Plan. Those are all really important grants that we have taken advantage of in the past. In the past, those federal grants have been on a one-third, one-third, one-third basis. FCM has successfully lobbied to have them forty percent federal contribution, forty percent provincial contribution, twenty percent municipal contribution, in recognition that, you know, a lot of times, those programs are dealing with national problems at the local level, and the local level doesn't always have the resources to match the big So that is a win. The other thing that they wanted to know was how the engagement was doing, whether, we used to receive a lot of emails from FCM, I don't know if anyone else noticed that, but as counselors, our inboxes are traditionally pretty darn full, and a lot of them coming from FCM, at least on my part, I found that I had trouble keeping up with getting to reading all of it. You know, it's another newsletter, another newsletter. So, I suggested that it'd be really awesome if we got some sort of an update from our representative, but recognizing that that is difficult, pardon me, in our region, because of our thirteen municipalities, and getting out and around to see everyone, as Counselor Martin knows from being away here tonight, with trying to get around to see everybody about the library, I've suggested that even a short video would, there's something that you could present at council that would include the community, because when we get those emails in our inbox, it's not necessarily including the community, it's only coming to us. So, that was my suggestion for them. I have contacted Counselor Coleman since then, and he has committed to making presentations to council, if and when we would like him to, as soon as he's received his materials from Ottawa. And their power presentation noted that small urban centers, which is what we are, has been kind of left out. They've addressed the rural issues and the urban issues, but they haven't dealt with the small urban centers issues, which has often been a problem for us, where services are centered in Victoria, and there is an assumption that we have access to those. But sometimes, getting to Victoria isn't all that easy. They've been using their address at the Union of British Columbia Municipalities Annual General Meeting Convention, that we attend as a part of a way to reach out to us, but agree that it's such a large agenda, that their local chapters might work better. And they pointed out that there is an awful lot of money on the table right now. There's twenty-five point two billion for housing, ten point one billion for trade, and twenty-six point nine billion... and twenty-six point nine billion for green infrastructure. And the big issue is that those announcements are wonderful, but if the province doesn't have matching funding available, then we are a lot with coming up with our, even if we can come up with our twenty percent. So their suggestion and my recommendation is that we send a letter to the provincial government and to UBCM urging them to ensure that their, the necessary matching funds are available to take advantage of these possibly once-in-a-lifetime billion-dollar grant programs. And further, that I'd like to see us identify a project and take a leadership role on securing federal and provincial funding. So Affordable Youth Housing is an initiative that's been taking shape in Callwood. It's been on the front page of the Goldstream Gazette with Bill McElroy, who's my treasurer at the Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee. It's been spearheaded by a local Callwood youth who spoke out about homeless youth going to Belmont School. She, I've known her since she was in kindergarten and was astounded to find that she was homeless in high school, and has become a very valuable member of society and gotten through her troubles and moved on. But the initiative is a result of that effort, and I'd really like to see something happen with it. So my recommendation is that we send a letter to the Minister of Finance requesting adequate funds be set aside to ensure that the federal grant funds can be matched and utilized, that we send a letter to UBCM asking them to lobby the provincial government to ensure that the matching funds will be available for federal grants, and that council lobby the province to provide ongoing funding support to support transitional youth housing in Callwood. And just to let you know, the Victoria Housing Society, who is the proponent, working in association with the Wellness Center on the Affordable Housing on Whale Road, has a model that includes a supportive housing for youth who are transitioning into adulthood. So that would be youth who are fifteen to seventeen years old, they might be on a youth agreement, or in some other way identified to the ministry, and then they would have a supportive mentor on site, and they would live in like a little bachelor suite that's included in the housing proposal, and have someone to go to to help them with the logistics if they had problems. So that's the initiative that I'm hoping we can lobby to find support for. The difficult part of that housing, it's easy to come up with the funding for the bricks and mortar, it's harder to get that ongoing funding for the supportive services that are needed to make the bricks and mortar really function for people. So that's what I'm hoping we can lobby for.
Thank you. So you've made the recommendation, I need a second.
And I would make that motion.
Second. Counselor Trace, thank you. Any questions to Counselor Day? Counselor Noll?
Only one question is, on these grant programs, the municipalities are supposed to come up with twenty percent of that, and there's no financial impact statement in your motion. I would really like to see that before we commit wholeheartedly to this.
So I guess that would be specific to a specific grant being sought. So any financial implication would come once a project was proposed. So the housing program, I did try to find out more through our planning department on the Victoria Housing Society's proposal to bring you more definite information, but it wasn't available to me at this time. There is a meeting upcoming, so I will certainly bring you more information as it becomes available.
Any others? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you for attending and bringing back all that great information. Seven point one point two memorandum, Resolution Number One Five Five for Signing Authorities and Restrictions, Requested Amendment. My finance end. Jen, Chris?
Thank you. So the intent of the memo before you is really, excuse me, to address the impact of the recent dissolvement of your standing committee structure. So specifically, the city's current signing authorities and restrictions resolution, which is attached in Appendix A, speaks to your finance chair and your vice finance chair. Those positions no longer exist, so this is somewhat a matter of housekeeping, but we are looking for council to rescind that Resolution Number One Five Five and pass a slightly amended Resolution Number One Five Nine. And we're proposing to keep the mayor on as assigning authority and assign the acting mayor. So there's no changes to our signing structure, it still requires the two signatories, but we are proposing to use the acting mayor. What this would require, we would circulate a signature card, and we'd be off and running on this. Just let me know if you have any questions at all.
So first step is to rescind Resolution Number One Five Five?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And then next step, folks, would be to add the named...
Second.
Just making sure that we're on the right page.
So I moved that we adopt Resolution Number One Five Nine?
Yes. Following council positions, be granted a signing authority. Seconded on that one was Counselor Logan. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you. Next, again, up, our favorite time of the year. Oh, I hear snickering going on beside me. Memorandum, again, from our deputy director regarding sewer service parcel tax rule preparation bylaw number one four three seven two thousand and eleven. We need two things this evening, appointment of Callwood Central LSA Parcel Tax Rule Review Panel, and then, secondly, to set that date.
Thank you. So just a little bit of background here. The Callwood Central Sewer Local Area Service, and the area I'm referring to is attached, there's a map in Appendix B before you, that is the only sewer area that we don't yet have a parcel tax established for. So we are looking this year to create the role, to authenticate the role, and we will be taxing for the first time on this sewer area. So the city started construction works about fifteen years ago, and we've recently completed construction of the central sewer area. So the memo before you outlines the process. The last time the city underwent this process was about six years ago. And we have attached a memo, or, sorry, rather, a timeline in Appendix A. These, it's quite a tight timeline, but really, this is working around both our budget meeting schedule as well as our year-end audit schedule, and ensuring, one, that we meet all the requirements of the charter, but also that we have the panel authenticated in time for our property tax rate bylaw. So the timeline, we are actually proposing that we have the first hearing on Thursday, February first. We have spoken with legal counsel, and they have confirmed that they are available that day. So typically, we'll have both city staff, the collector, that's myself, and our legal counsel present to speak to any complaints that are received. And we do need to establish a panel that is a minimum of three individuals. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I just want to be clear, because it says January the thirty-first, so you're proposing to move that to February first?
I am, yes. Thank you.
So just if I may, Madam Mayor, I think the two dates that the panel members need to be available for are February first and February sixth, if I'm reading that correctly?
Yes, so we are proposing that the first hearing take place on Thursday, February first. Depending on the number of complaints received, if we cannot address them all at one panel hearing, I would then recommend possibly the next day even. Our legal counsel has confirmed they are available on Friday, February second. I acknowledge it is a Friday. We also did suggest February sixth as that date is available, and chances are, if that date was not needed to address any more complaints, we could then bring back the final role and authenticate on that date. Or even, depending on who is on the panel, we could possibly piggyback on the Monday, February fifth meeting, the Committee of the Whole meeting that's set for six P.M., perhaps we could have a meeting to authenticate at five P.M. that night. February first is really the critical date, and perhaps it suggests a time of five P.M., but really, we'll be communicating it via the mail-out tomorrow, so there'll be plenty of notice for folks.
So do we have volunteers or voluntolds? I, yeah, I've sat on the panel in the past. I have no objections. Counselor Trace? Yes? Anybody else? Three we need. Both dates, you have to be available for both dates, or...
During the day and what hours generally?
We're talking five to, it just depends on what we receive for review.
So they're late day evening type of?
You may establish whatever time you like. Typically, in the past, it has been in evening time, but really, it could be any time of day. We will know by January twenty-second what complaints have been received, and staff will very quickly be able to advise on the merit of, you know, what's involved in addressing those complaints, so we should have a decent idea as to how long the panel hearing will take. I would imagine it will be one to three hours.
If they're in the evening, you worship, I'm happy, but I can't take time off work to attend.
So we can put those, put the three names forward for the time being, and if we, and then, once we have a better idea of what our timeline's going to be, then we can see if we need to address that. Again, revisit it?
Certainly, yeah. The most important thing tonight is that we just establish the date and time of the first hearing, and we'll be mailing notice to all properties tomorrow morning with that information.
So...
Thank you. So I'll make a motion that this committee, or the council appoint Mayor Hamilton, Counselor Trace, and Counselor Logan for the Central LSA Parcel Tax Rule Review, and that we direct that the Council Callwood Central LSA Parcel Tax Review Panel convey on Thursday, February first, two thousand and eighteen, at five P.M. at the council chambers.
Seconded, please? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. And next, moving to, we're skipping over Transportation Public Infrastructure Item seven point two point one, it was one that was removed at the beginning of our meeting. Eight point one in bylaws has also been removed, as has eight point two. So we are moving in on to item number eight point three, bylaw number one seven one three, for first, second, and third readings, Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization Number Five Nine Eight Two Thousand and One, Amendment Number Sixty-Five.
Move introduction.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Final bylaw for this evening, bylaw number one seven one four, first, second, and third readings, again, same location, but this one is Callwood West Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Bylaw Authorization Number Sixty-Five Two Thousand and One, Amendment Number Forty-Nine.
Move introduction? Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move third.
Second.
Suspense.
I know. Like, how long have we been doing this, folks? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you. Release of in-camera resolutions, all taken care of previously?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That would be the ones that you released from in camera tonight. It would be up to council if they wanted to mention which ones those were at this time, and then they will show up in the council minutes.
Move adjournment. Beat them.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?